Good morning. I'd like to call the May 5th, 2025 morning session of the Johnston County Board of Commissioners to order. Welcome you all here. Good to see everyone this morning. And welcome to those who are watching us on our live stream. Good morning to you as well. I did want to mention our six board priorities before we get started today. They are educational funding, infrastructure, financial stewardship, land use, public safety, and our county employees. And we would talk about the summer, all of those this morning and this evening. As is customary for us, we will start with an invocation. I've asked Commissioner Davis to lead us in that, and that will be followed by the pledge led by American Legion Post 270 of Smithfield. So if you choose to stand for the invocation, please do so now.
If you'll bow your heads. Dear heavenly Lord, thank you for this day, and thank you for this rain we had this past weekend. Thank you for everyone here. Please bless this meeting and get our hearts and our minds as we work together for the service of the citizens here in Johnston County. Please grant us wisdom and guide us in your work. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, if you'd be seated, we do have a proclamation for Memorial Day to read, and I think Robert Boyett has some words for us before we do that.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
I just wanted to invite the public to attend our Memorial Day ceremony, which will be May 26th at 11 o'clock here in the courthouse in Noah's Superior Court Room. And I appreciate the proclamation acknowledging Memorial Day. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Godwin, do you want to read that?
I will. I sure will. Today is the 55th anniversary of my first day in basic training. This is appropriate. Johnston County Board of Commissioners, May 26th, 2025. Whereas on Memorial Day, America undertakes its solemn duty to remember the brave Americans who sacrificed their lives for the cause of freedom and the security of our nation. And whereas we are constantly reminded that there are those in the world who would attempt to deprive us of our freedom and undermine our nation's very foundation. And whereas military men and women from Johnston County have served our nation throughout American history with 248 Johnston County service members losing their lives in action in World War I, World War II, the Korean War, Vietnam War, the Gulf War, and the war in Iraq and Afghanistan. And whereas by honoring these proud soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, and coast guardmen lost throughout our country's history, we renew our commitment to upholding the democratic ideals they fought and died to preserve. And whereas the citizens of Johnston County must never take for granted our privileges and freedom or forget to give thanks and honor to those who risked their lives so that we may enjoy our many blessings. Now therefore, the Johnston County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 26th, 2025 as Memorial Day in Johnston County and urges citizens to remember the bravery of those who gave their lives so that their sacrifices serve as a reminder of the cost of our freedom. Adopted this 5th day of May 2025. Mr. Chairman, a move that we adopt this proclamation.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed nay. Proclamation is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next item is approval of this morning's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with the following changes. That item number five, Public Service Recognition Week proclamation be moved to item number four, and public comments be moved to item number five.
Second, that motion.
All right. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor of approving the agenda as change with the changes noted, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed nay. The agenda is adopted. Next is the consent agenda. We have eight items on that today. They are approval of the minutes from our April 7th morning and evening sessions. We do have a public hearing for our budget for '25-'26. That will be on June 2nd at our 10 o'clock meeting. And we will have other meetings that we'll announce at the appropriate time for the budget. We also have approval of our fiscal year '25-'26 annual plan. Sheriff's Office requests to surplus two vehicles. And we have the Health Department approval of the fiscal year '25-'26 fee schedules. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council proposed budget for fiscal year '25-'26. And we have a couple of budget revisions, one for economic development for an HVAC system upgrade, and one for the sheriff's office to move some expenditures to appropriate line items or move revenues to the appropriate line items. And finally, we have our tax releases and refunds from March 16th through April 15th of this year. Any need to pull any item?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the consent agenda items A through G as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed nay. The consent agenda is approved. So that brings us to the Public Service Recognition Week, the proclamation. I've asked Commissioner Harris to read that for us. But before that, Paulette, did you want to come up and say anything before that? Our Human Resources Director, Paulette Williams?
Chairman, good morning, Chairman and the Board of Commissioners.
Good morning.
I am honored to acknowledge such a special occasion. Public Service Recognition Week observed annually during the first week of May. This week serves to recognize the dedication and hard work of public employees nationwide, including here in Johnston County. I'd like to thank our Johnston County staff for the important work that you do each day, as well as our county commissioners and administration for their continued commitment and support in prioritizing employees and in recognizing this special week.
All right. Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir. The proclamation for Public Service Recognition Week, May 4th through the 10th. Whereas Public Service Recognition Week has been celebrated since 1985, honoring those who serve our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees. And whereas the residents of Johnston County, North Carolina rely on the dedicated service of public employees on a daily basis to uphold the public good, remain accountable, and enhance the quality of life for residents, businesses, and visitors alike. And whereas public employees positively impact nearly every aspect of people's lives by providing essential services, including healthcare, public safety, education, infrastructure, social services, natural resource conservation, and promoting business and job growth and beyond. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of government services depend on the hard work and commitment of these employees whose contributions deserve recognition and appreciation. Whereas it is appropriate to acknowledge and celebrate the commitment, professionalism, sacrifice, and dedication of those who choose to serve in public positions as their contributions have a profound impact on the well-being of individuals, families, and communities. Now therefore, we, the members of the Johnston County Board of Commissioners, commend and express our deepest gratitude to all public employees for their unwavering commitment and for the critical role they serve in our community. We hereby unanimously proclaim the week of May 4th through the 10th, 2025 shall be designated as Public Service Recognition Week, adopted this 5th day of May 2025. Mr. Chairman, I'll enter that into the record as a form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? Yeah, I would just say again, one of our six priorities, county employees, and cannot thank them enough for you enough out there too, enough for what you do for the citizens of Johnston County, and the least of which is helping this board to get all the information that we need and frequently ask for. So thanks to all y'all for that. So any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All in favor, please say aye. All right. Proclamation is adopted. And I think you have some other information for us. So we'll turn it over to you here for a few minutes.
Yeah, absolutely. So as you know, each month we come before you all to recognize our retirees. This time, we are going to recognize over a course of a different couple of months. Up first, we have February of 2025, Ms. Marcia Renee Smith with our Department of Social Services. In May of 2025, we have Ms. Donna Bailey Taylor with the Visitors' Bureau. In June of 2025, we have Ms. Maria Martin with our Department of Public Health. Not present for June, we have Ms. Teresa Fagard with the Department of Social Services. And then this evening, we will also recognize Mr. Benji Gaddis with our Sheriff's Office, who also retired in May of 2025. So if you all will allow for a picture with our retirees that are present.
Sure. Come on up closer. Yeah, yeah.
Good morning, ladies.
Somebody's got to be in the mid- somebody's got to be in-
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for all of your service.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Ms. Williams, do you have one more?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members.
Good morning.
We have more than, we have a few of these things this morning, two awards, which is great.
Yeah, good.
But also, I want to recognize Paulette and her office HR for receiving, recently receiving Excellence in Organizational Development Leadership Award, and for the great work they're doing there. So I just wanted to recognize them this morning. And I think some of those staff members are here.
Like they've come in. All right, yeah, yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, you might as well. Yeah, come on, we're in the picture taking.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Y'all coordinated. I don't know if y'all meant to do that. Okay, really good. Kudos. I see why y'all got the word for organization now. Worked out well. Right?
All right, now I'd like to recognize Dr. Pearson, our Director of our Health Department, to come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here to recognize one of our longtime employees who received an award last week at Eastern District of North Carolina Public Health Association. Steve Strickland has been with our Health Department for 36 years.
Wow.
He started as an administrative assistant, then became administrative officer. He was a local public health administrator, and now he's Human Services Deputy Director. He's our finance officer. I think all of y'all know that.
He's a good one.
Yeah. He assures that our department thrives, and you know, we set an example for other health departments in the state. Many people call him. He mentors other finance officers. They listen to his input. He assures that every dollar we spend is necessary. I promise you that. And he likes to say, if you can't say no, then yes has no meaning. He is dedicated to our agency, fiscally disciplined, and it allows us to expand services. And for all the stuff that we do, he assures that we have the money to do it. So that's great. He also serves as our HIPAA officer, our facilities manager, and he supervises our billing team and our medical records team. He takes on these responsibilities willingly, always available. He understands all of our core values, which are beyond media, me-to-me, community collaboration, always learning and improving integrity and prevention. So last week, Steve received the Eastern District North Carolina Public Health Association Stacy Koval Outstanding Individual Achievement Award. So I wanted to recognize him today. Steve, I don't know if you want to say something?
Well, I can say that I only excel for the leadership we have here in Johnston County. Over the years, Dr. Leonard Woodall, Dr. Marilyn Pearson, Richard Self, Rick Hester have inspired me to do well in my job. And I've learned so much from Rick in terms of being conservative with money. But thank you. I enjoy working for Johnston County, assuring that the tax dollars is being wisely here to prosper while we do.
Good job, sir. Yeah, yeah. Great job.
Thank you.
We get another picture? Yeah, we might as well get another picture. Yeah, that's right. Dr. P, yeah.
Just stay off the ladder, Steve.
The yellow light's coming on this thing. Don't know what that means. All right, yeah. I was gonna say, who's got a phone?
He's got a disposable one.
All right, now I believe Vice Chairman Harris has something for us as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will say before Steve leaves and Dr. Pearson, I want to say that our Health Department, our public health folks do an extraordinary job. I've been on their board for, since about 2019, I think. And it's really, really an amazing operation. And you both, Steve, you lead a hard charge to make sure that the money is done efficiently, and you do an extraordinary job. And Dr. Pearson as well, y'all have provided great leadership. And having an opportunity to serve on the Board of Directors of the State Association for Boards of Health, there's a lot of great people around the state doing great things, but I'll tell you, not everybody works like Johnston County does. And so we're very thankful for you and the leadership that you both bring to our public health and to the citizens of this county. It's really, really well done. Thank you. And then the second thing is that, and I got to get my notes out here to read this one. So our Social Services Director, Christine Dowdell, Ms. Dowdell has been appointed as the local county representative to the Leadership Council of American Public Human Services Association, or the APHSA. And that association supports leaders from state, county, and the city human services agencies to advance the well-being of individuals, families, and communities nationwide. She has done an extraordinary job as being our lead person for Department of Social Services. And I'm amazed every day at the great job and the team that she has assembled, and the morale, and just the great leadership that's there. And citizens are really being served efficiently and to a great degree. And so I just want to publicly thank you and congratulate you on your well-deserved appointment. And we're glad that you're in Johnston County, and you decided to call this home. And we're thankful to have you here, and we appreciate the job you're doing. So if you'd come up and say a few words.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you. I was very happy. I've been in social work for over 30 years, and to be selected and asked to be a part of that board was very inspiring. And it also allows me the opportunity to represent Johnston County, Johnston County DSS. And I'm just so happy because one of the things that I do, I work with on that board, it's from different states. And you learn things from different people. And we work closely also with the new administration. And so each administration that's there, we get the opportunity to meet people at the presidential level. And so we get a lot of firsthand information about things that are changing and improving. But again, I want to say thank you to Commissioner Harris, to Board Chair Mr. Coleman. You guys have been very, very supportive of us in the DSS agency, and I just really, really appreciate it. And I'm glad that, I feel that this is the place that I need to be. And also want to thank Jennifer, Rick, and everyone else because it's hard doing this job if you don't have the support of your county commissioners, your board, your attorneys, your county manager, and then also your finance. Because he helps us out a lot between you and him. So I just want to say thank you again.
Congratulations. Picture of the morning? Did you want to say last picture of the morning? Yeah, the last picture of the morning? Yeah, yeah.
It may not be the last.
The next to last, the next to last picture of the morning.
Take a few. Everybody smile. Don't blink.
No pressure.
And just to look at, is there anyone here for the traditional public comment before I take off and read a bunch of stuff I don't need to? All right, I don't think, Madam Clerk, any emails for this part of the public comment? I know we have one for the next one. Okay. All right, the next item up is an Economic Development Incentive Grant, Clayton Commerce Center project. And I will open the public hearing and call on our Economic Development Director, Chris Johnson, to come forward and explain the purpose of this public hearing and introduce anybody he needs to, and also maybe give us a little history of this program in Johnston County.
My pleasure, Commissioner. Good morning, county leadership. Over the last, well, since December or the beginning of the year, the office has missed out on over 25 opportunities to attract jobs and investment here in North Car- in Johnston County. And the reason for that is that we don't have available product. As we've come out of COVID, more in the reshoring of manufacturing, more and more companies are looking at the need of having existing buildings. And so this represents over billions of dollars and thousands of jobs that could have called Johnston County home. And unfortunately, at y'all's commission retreat a few months ago, it was pouring it out that a staggering 77% of Johnston County's 125 labor shed leaves the county each day to work. That's over 93,000 individuals. Now, when I moved here in 1990, there was only 90,000 people that lived in Johnston County. So to put it in perspective, in a short period of time, nearly the entire population of Johnston County is working elsewhere. Now, we've done some great things to attract investment and job creation, but we're still woefully behind the curve. And it's also been mentioned that agricultural, as well as industrial, in development pays for itself and does not put a strain on the county services. Now, other communities that we compete with in the Triangle Region have their own business parks. They have their, they're building their own buildings. One of my neighboring colleagues proudly states that they're on their eighth spec building. And that means their county commissioners and their county leadership are spending multiple millions, talking $20, $30, $40 million into spec buildings. But I think we've taken a more prudent and conservative approach here in Johnston County to where we don't feel like government should be competing against the private sector. And so especially with the investment that y'all have made in schools, that's where I think the appropriate investment should incur. But however, to meet the speed of market that is needed has never been more critical. And it's Wylie's Capital's desire to collaborate with the county using the program to invest and build three state-of-the-art facilities, Class A facilities, which is a tilt-up concrete totaling 382,000 square feet, and in what I refer to as a mini industrial park that will be located on US 70 in the town of Clayton. And for a point of reference, this is kind of in the heart of our life science sector manufacturing area. Wylie Capital's a leading commercial industrial real estate firm and has projects throughout the U.S. They have a very strong background that focuses on build-to-suit office, medical, as well as industrial projects. And with this build-a-lease program, Wylie Capital will work in partnership with the county to construct two out of that 380,003 building project. One of the largest ones is a 221,000 Class A building that will be marketed to potential advanced manufacturing clients considering Johnston County. And this model has been successful not only here in Johnston County, because this will be actually, hopefully, the third one that will be constructed. But this has also been successful in neighboring counties, Lee County, as well as Harnett County is in, has, is working with the developer down there. So what we have been able to do here, others are now emulating that to meet the growing needs. So the competition, the level of competition, the bar is constantly rising. But this year, two-year month-to-month lease does not begin until the building has received a temporary certificate of occupancy. And the county is only committing to $100,000, excuse me, $100,000 square feet of the total 221,000. So it is my position that with the pipeline of economic development projects looking at the Triangle Region, that if we have a building under construction, that hopefully we will never have to use this program. It's our goal, as well as Wylie's capital, because the, we're only committing to $3 a square foot. And that is, that is significantly well below the market average of $9 to $12 a square foot. So they're not making any money. They're just basically using this to leverage and to hopefully get something going here in Johnston County. And the taxpayer safeguards are in place. So if the building is sold or leased prior to the completion, the county is not required to make any lease payments. So that's our bet, is that we feel that if this building can get under construction, that still will be coming out of the ground, that the clients will see this and say, yeah, they see an end date, so they know that when they can start occupying this space. If at any time during the two-year lease period is either sold or leased, the county commitment is immediately over. So we're not, we're committing to a two-year agreed-to-lease at $3 a foot, but it's a month-to-month, so that if any time that it's sold or leased, our commitment is over. The total investment is anticipated to exceed $55 million. However, the Economic Development Incentive Grant, or EDIG, is based on the hard construction value of the three buildings. The project is required to create over 25 jobs with an average salary of $74,000. However, because of the three facilities, because of the three opportunities that a client has, because there'll be a 90,000-square-foot building, and there'll be 100,000 square foot, they'll be able to select which building works best for them, we feel like that the job creation will exceed this threshold. As customary, we always run these reports and these numbers by Dr. Mike Walden, a retired professor and economist within North Carolina State. And he shows that the voluntary investment, as well as the job, and ancillary jobs are projected to be in the millions annually for the, for the county. So not only will this project create opportunities for the county, but ancillary job growth will be, the county will benefit also. And I'm sure there are many residents that may consider this as form of a welfare. However, I view welfare as taking taxes from someone else and giving it to another. Yet, with the conservative construction of the EDIG, the incentives only come from payments made by the county on their investment, not anyone here today or watching online. So basically, it's every new dollar that the county, that the company pays, is basically is a dollar that we didn't have. And we're agreeing for five years to basically 50% of that to be returned. So you pay me a dollar, and we return 50 cents for five-year period. So it's a, it's a safe bet. So again, at any time that the benchmarks are not met, our agreements are all over. So it's, it's only on new investment. And as County Attorney Jennifer Slusher will cover, the project- And as County Attorney Jennifer Slusher will cover, the project also checks the four legal boxes with regards to economic development incentive. The lease program and the EDIG have been vetted and approved by the Economic Development Board. And I'd like to close by saying, later this month, we'll have over 3,000 students here in Johnston County graduate. Now, some will go and serve our nation in the military, some will probably proceed to a four-year institution, and a lot will probably participate in the commissioner's promised program that I proudly talk about when I, when I speak to various groups of the commitment that y'all have made here. But as Linwood Parker likes to state, nothing empowering a person more than a paycheck on Friday from a good-paying job and a living wage. So some of our young folks will not take those three steps. They will actually go and hit the job market immediately, beginning their career and trying to make a better, a better life for themselves as well as their family. So before you, it's an excellent and fiscal conservative opportunity to reverse that 77% growing trend of driving elsewhere and finding a quality job there. So it's in that spirit that we respectfully ask that the commissioners vote favorably on the county's Economic Development Center grant and lease program presented for you this time. And I'd like to, at this time, I'd like to call on Ms. Jennifer Slusher to present you the, the legal language, which afterward, I'll step back up and introduce Mr. Jason Simons with Wiley Capital, so that he can answer any questions or, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions right now. We can wait till after, Jennifer, at the end of the first time.
So if you would, some of the history?
Sure.
What we've, the number and the success of?
Sure thing. This will be, we have committed to four over the past, since the program's been, since the inception of the program. Two of those projects never got off the ground, so we didn't put anything, we made commitments that if you do certain things, then we would, we would do that. Those never happened. And one of the things that didn't happen directly equated to the interest rates rising. We had a local developer said that, there's no way in the world I can make the numbers work at $3 a foot because of the rising interest rates. The other is having issues with regards to infrastructure, extending water and sewer, and the cost overruns from that. But the two successful ones that we have done is, one, the Advanced Tech Building, which is behind Studio TK of the old Gersberger facility back there. We committed to leasing half of that building of 50,000 square feet. That building was immediately taken up by the company because they said, Chris, we're so thankful that we did this because we actually outgrew our space. If you recall, they only needed 50,000 square feet. We talked them into talking into doing 100. Once they got up in operation, they said, we actually need to take it off, so they didn't even, even use the facility there. The other one is the Al Nayar Building, which is on Brogdon Road. A lot of people go by there and, and see it empty or presume that it's empty. Actually, that's off the market as well. That, that building has been fully leased. Now, it's used for storage, so it's not necessarily what we wanted to have with the job creation, but our commitment there was only about four or five months on, on that space. So basically, we've got now is a $45 million building being occupied and paying taxes, and a very small investment on, on our part, or on your part, rather, so.
All right, thank you. Ms. Slusher?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I want to take a few moments to go over the proposed resolution and the proposed economic development incentive grant and single-tenant commercial lease for the Clayton Commerce project, as, as Chris has talked about. The project does meet the four factors that are required under the statute for economic development. One is job creation. Two is capital investment. Three is competition. And four is diversifying the economy. Chris talked a little bit about the economic development impact analysis that was performed by Dr. Walden, and he opines that the direct, indirect, and induced impacts from the development at full buildout is expected to be over $66 million. As to the actual grant agreement, as we've talked about, the proposed investment exceeds $55 million in total investment, but the vertical construction hard cost is, is what we look at as eligible investments. And that is estimated to be not less than, than 30 million. It's probably going to be more like 41, but, but 30 is what we know for sure with regards to that capital investment. To construct and complete this 380,000-square-feet of Class A speculative industrial facilities in the Clayton Township. And as Chris talked about, this is a strategic location for Johnston County for this type of development. The employment commitment for this project is solid. The commitment is 25 permanent full-time job positions for employees that work actually at the site. And the average salary is $74,000. Though it is anticipated, based on the size of these facilities and the nature of the work that is going, going to be performed, that the job creation will be much greater. And in fact, Dr. Walden estimates that to be 166. The incentive proposal is a cash grant that's made in five annual payments. We estimate that that will begin in 2028, but it really depends upon when the, the capital investment is completed. The deadline for that capital investment completion is December 2027, but it could be, it could be earlier. And of course, those are quantified and measured at 50% of the ad valorem taxes that are actually paid on those eligible investments. And, and the eligible investments, in this case, are real estate, not including the cost of land. If the incentives are granted, Clayton Commerce through Wiley Capital commits to making those eligible investments, attaining all of the employment goals, providing certification of all of that employment. And of course, these grant payments are conditioned upon Clayton Commerce paying the ad valorem taxes for that year for all of its property located in Johnston County that is subject to ad valorem taxes. And of course, Clayton Commerce must be current on all payments owed to the county, must have had all of their property tax filings listed with the tax office, and have no current pending appeal relating to valuation with the property at the project site. And of course, they have to be in compliance with all of Johnston County's ordinances and regulations. There are recapture provisions in the contracts if Clayton Commerce does not carry out and maintain the terms of the agreement, that's required by law, and we have included those in, in our agreement. And as we talked about a little bit earlier, the grant agreement also contains provisions for that single-tenant commercial lease, which would not exceed two years at $25,000 a month for that middle building. The lease payments stop if the building is leased or sold during the lease period, and we have recapture provisions that apply if the building is sold during the lease period. And those are essentially the material terms of the agreement as attached to the resolution that's before you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the legal terms.
Any questions for Ms. Slusher?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Without further ado, I'd like to introduce the individual. I'd be spending $55 million here in Johnston County, Mr. Jason Simons with Wiley Capital. I actually first met Jason about five or six years, it was before COVID. And I was attending a conference, and I was on a Zoom meeting with him to talk about investing here in Johnston County. So we're very proud to say that this may be coming to fruition.
Good morning, Mr. Simons.
Good morning, everyone, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Jennifer and Chris, beautifully outlined. I'm with, I'm Jason Simon, the owner of Wiley Capital. We have the chance to invest really anywhere in the country. In particular, we've made the decision that where we're based in the Midwest is an interesting place to invest, but we really love the tailwinds associated with the Carolinas, and in particular, North Carolina, and your part of North Carolina. You have a wonderful county with, you know, wonderful labor dynamics and wonderful educational institutions. And from our perspective, it really makes it a very attractive place to invest. If it weren't for these incentives, however, it makes it much more challenging, especially in a time like today where there's an awful lot going on that makes it very challenging for developers like us to bring projects to fruition. So these incentives and the grant are really important to us bringing this project forward and creating the, the buildings that, you know, actually will, will end up employing a fair number, hopefully, all Johnston County residents in those buildings. And so we look forward to making the capital investment. We're very grateful that you'd consider it. And you have a wonderful team that's really helped us connect the dots on how to bring this to fruition. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I didn't have any quick, but could you pull up the graphic of where, I think there's one in this presentation that has the, exactly where, there's another one that has the industry, nope?
Are you looking for the parcel map?
No, no, I'm looking for the one that has the other surrounding industry, as far as where it's located.
That's in there.
Maybe, maybe second to last page, I'm guessing.
It was the second one.
Beginning?
Just at the beginning, yeah.
All right. Sorry, sorry.
At the wrong second.
The other second.
There we go, yeah. So that's kind of what I wanted to see. The area that we're, we're talking about is already industrialized and has several facilities right there. So sometimes we forget the, people, we assume people know where we're talking about. But that's right near the I-42 and Clayton Boulevard intersection, so, and Palatin Road, so, all right. I didn't have anything else.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, this is the point I'll ask anyone else here wishing to speak to this. All right, don't see anyone stepping forward. We do have an email from Shannon Peterson, and I will summarize that. He had asked the board to vote no on this. He considers this a lifelong decision, and that the placing of the buildings here would be a detriment to the quality of life, particularly concerned about the traffic. And he asked us to consider that as we're making, making our decision. That is pretty much the summary of his email. It will be in the record. So any other, any, anyone else wishing to speak? All right, any final comments by commissioners?
I've got a question for Chris. Chris, we've had some other residents indicate concerns about this type of thing because of what Mr. Peterson had pointed out, quality of life, the impact of that, traffic, that sort of thing. And just for the record, if someone is going to be traveling on that road headed to Wake County for a job as opposed to stopping here in Clayton and work locally, do you see that as a negative or positive or comment on that?
Well, in my opinion, any time that we can keep people off the road, particularly I-40 or the new I-42, it's a benefit. Not only just time, I mean, you think about the quality of life that we all like to have. If you're having to drive 45 minutes into a community to work and drive 45 minutes back, you're talking about an hour and a half of your life daily of missing kids' recitals, soccer games, all the things like that. Plus, we're also missing the quality of life of individuals spending money here locally because they're going to fill up in Garner or somewhere else. So you've got the, that benefit. You know, so I, I see this as, obviously, we're at 77%, and that was shocking, because I knew that we were, I always said we were at 60, 65 in my presentation. So when I heard the consultant say that we're at 77%, that was shocking to me. And I know that when I took this role several years ago, we had the, what we refer to as the 30-for-30 goal of, by the year 2030, of having that number reduced down to 30% of our employ, our residents leaving elsewhere. So we've got a big delta that we've got to cover, and it's going to be projects such as this. But then I go back to our youth of what, where are they going to work next year and in two or three years? And not everybody's going to go to college. And so we want to make sure that we, make sure that there are good quality jobs here locally that, that can change lives and change generational lives, as opposed to, my wife and I own a retail store, there's only so much money that we can pay our employees. And, and that's just, that's retail. And so obviously, people can't afford to, to change their lives if they're working those types of, types of jobs, so.
So keeping jobs locally is really a positive on the?
It is, it is. And, and let me stress also, going back to a couple of comments that Commissioner Lauder had asked about other buildings and stuff. This building is being built as a manufacturing setup. The, the building that, that's over on Brogdon Road at 95 here in Smithfield is what they refer to as a cross-dock facility. Our office and our advisory board has taken a position to no longer incentivize those types of buildings, because, several reasons. One, they typically attract more warehouse distribution, which we do not want here in Johnston County. We will, I jokingly say, we don't want to be the garage or the storage building for Wake County. And that's all we're going to be if we attract those types of businesses. So we want to make sure that we're attracting, anyway, we're incentivizing those manufacturing jobs. So had this be set up as a warehouse distribution, I'd be standing up here saying, we don't need to be incentivizing that as far as a cross-dock. So I think in working with Wiley Capital, they understand our goals and objectives of, of moving the needle for our residents of Johnston County. So it's going to be set up and built and constructed as a, as a manufacturing setting.
Great. Thank you.
I had a question on, on that very note. Obviously, a lot of work's been already done, planning and so forth. Could, could we get a little bit of background on how, how we can be assured that these particular floor plans and these particular type buildings would be something that would, would interest a manufacturing facility?
I'll let Jennifer, but I believe we kind of know that, that, that obviously, if it's set up for something different than, than what's been presented, then our incentives are over. I mean, you know, so if, if they get out there and say, well, we've got a bunch of cross-dock facility things, then we wouldn't be incentivizing that. So we've got the clawback provisions that we do not pay anything until they do exactly what we've outlined here, which is the manufacturing setting that we desire.
I guess my question would be more directed toward Wiley Capital, since, you know, they are the major investor here.
I'll, I'll let Jason.
Like, I'm sure you guys have a record of, of buildings like this and, and can be assured that this is the type of building that a manufacturing facility would like to have, so that all this money doesn't get invested, and then the manufacturing facility come in and they go, nah, that's not, that's not what we're looking for.
Sure. From a design perspective, one of the things that manufacturers often look for is building depth, a greater depth, they can run multiple lines in that kind of facility. And so when you look at our site plan, which was presented previously, one of the reasons we really love this opportunity for this, for this particular development is we have diversity within the building depths. And the reason Chris and Jennifer and Ed, who helped us connect the dots here, really gravitated towards the middle building is it's got a 300-foot-plus depth. And so that really would allow a manufacturer to run multiple lines within that building, rather than our, our buildings that are on the west and the east side of, of the development, which we consider, quote, shallow bay. Some of those buildings may end up going to a manufacturer. Every company is unique, but often those are service-based companies that tend to have those more shallow bay and smaller spaces. So I think it's really building design is the, the main driver of having the best chance to land that kind of manufacturer. Okay. I hope that answers your question.
I think so.
Chris, do you mind helping Ms. Reeves find that building graphic, just point out that one, just so we can see? The visual part of me? No, 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 there's the graphic that had like the building itself on there, yeah, the three buildings on there, yeah.
Like this.
There you go.
Yes, there you go, that one. All right, so we're talking about the middle?
That's correct.
The middle building, okay.
And when you say shallow, when he says shallow bay, that's more like flex space. So when you have small businesses, HVAC, plumbers, things of that nature, it can be divided up into multiple small business opportunities, you know? So obviously, that's, the service industries in, in those facilities are just as critical as any manufacturing sector.
Along those lines, can you kind of help, especially just for the public perspective, explain, I know, for instance, in my district, there's been a, a lot of flex industrial buildings that have been constructed in the past two, two to three years, some of which are still vacant. So can you help the public understand why this location and this opportunity is still a necessity based on what you're seeing for economic development when they are seeing these spec buildings sitting there still with vacancies?
Sure thing. Well, the spec buildings that, that I'm familiar with, that have recently been constructed are on, on 42, there's 42 Crossings, and then there's 42 West Business Park, which I think they'll probably have to change the name now that 42 is no longer there. But like the 4042 area, let me just say that, in talking to those two developers, they're right now at about 70% occupant, occupied. So they are, they are well ahead of where they wanted to be. So they are, they are well ahead of where they wanted to be, a lot of the back sections. With regards to flex space, and I may have overstated about the shallow bay, but typical flex space can be broken down into smaller increments of 5,000 square feet, up to 50. And so they have divisional walls, so you can, you can separate it out, and they have more of a storefront to where you could have a plumber next to a goldfish operator, next to whatever other types of small businesses, services that are out there. Obviously, this being in a industrial area, it's highly unlikely that, that the, that those types of bu, companies or, or individuals would, would gravitate this. That's why the exciting thing, plus it's right there on I-42, and so it's, it's surrounded by other industrial properties, and so it's, it's, I feel that that centered, that type of synergy is going to be, bode well for us.
Thank you for that explanation. I've just heard several people say, why do we need more buildings, especially for the county, especially if spec, when we have these?
Right.
And I think it's important for them to understand, although they, they can look the same in a schematic, they are truly not built the same for the same uses.
Yeah, and, 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 and as far as the flex space, we didn't incentivize any of the flex space.
Right.
So they're, they're kind of going out, so they're not necessarily the more heavier user, the, the concrete floor may be a little bit smaller, the ceiling height, obviously, is quite a bit lower than what these facilities, which obviously is going to be 32-plus or, or something like that, where the flex space is more in the 20 to 22 height range.